All right, we'll call today's study session to order. We have three topics. We're going to have an interview for the LTAC Committee. And then we're going to hear from police of a refresher on the forfeiture funds and process. And then we're going to hear from Tanya Wallace on first installment of Administration Council Budget Discussion. But we'll start with Rowena Pineda. Welcome to our group. And this probably won't be too long, but before we vote on people for appointments, we like to meet them in person. Many of us already know you, of course, from your other work. But if you could just introduce yourself a little bit and some background and tell us why you're interested in the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, the city version of it. We call it the mini LTAC. So I'll just turn it over to you again, and then we'll see if any council members have questions.
Great. Good morning, everyone. I'm Rowena Pineda, and I hope you can hear me. I am the co-chair of the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition, the Spokane chapter. I'm also a board member of the Filipino American Association of the Inland Empire. And I work for the Spokane County United Way as the Director of Community Collaborations and Equity. And I'm interested in the LTAC one because my involvement with the Filipino Association, as you know, we attend several or present to cultural events. We have our Silangan dancers that perform at Unity in the Community and different other events in the community. I also appreciate just sharing the culture, not just of my community, but other communities within the city of Spokane. So is there anything else you want me to say, Brianne?
No, I think that's-
Or council president, sorry.
No, I am Brianne Teo, to quote a vice presidential candidate. I know one question we always ask is where did you go to high school? So that's Karen Stratton's question.
Oh, well, Councilmember Stratton, I hate to disappoint, but I did not go to high school in Spokane. I actually moved here from the San Francisco Bay area. So I went to Alameda High School in Alameda, California. But I do have a son who graduated from Lewis and Clark High School, did his undergrad at Whitworth, and graduated from Gonzaga Law School. So we covered all the local schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, you did. And I went to Mary Cliff, which was above Lewis and Clark back in the day. So I know all about Lewis and Clark High School. So I'm glad that he graduated from there and went on to law school. That's fabulous.
Other council member questions? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Good morning, Rowena, and welcome. So could you speak just a little bit, because what was exciting for Lodging Committee was your knowledge of lodging and food service. And I know in your prior life with the Health District, you had some exposure to that.
Yes, well-
Prior life?
My prior, my prior job at the Spokane Regional Health District, I was, of course, a program manager there. And as everybody knows, the Health District does the different, you know, does restaurant inspections. And I'm not that involved with that, except for when my program had to do events in the community. We always found it very ironic that we ourselves within, even though we were a program of the Health District, have to pay to do the special events. And so we understand the difficulty sometimes for community members, especially local groups, to have to pay for those permits, but also understand the importance of why that is and keeping food safe and that kind of thing. Yeah. So, yeah, that was definitely an interesting, interesting experience. Also realizing that one of the challenges, one of the challenges that we're facing right now with this particular committee is that with COVID-19, we all know that it's not going to be generating as much lodging tax as it has been before because we're just not meeting in person. So what does that mean? And also the impact of that industry just shutting down, in some cases, to several communities of color and who are mostly, you know, many of whom are employed in that industry. Thank you. That's a challenge. Who just said it? No, thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, you sort of touched on the question I was going to ask. Thank you very much for seeking this position. I think it's probably a really good fit. But I want to ask you, how do you see perhaps some of the revenues generated by the lodging tax being spent perhaps differently because of COVID-19 going forward?
That's a good question, council member. I think we need to be creative about it. And I think we need to look at different ways that we could still highlight the different cultures within Spokane. So some things that come to mind for me is how do we do that using video more and really using the virtual spaces that we're in right now because we can't be in person? But, you know, a lot of groups have been really creative about doing videos and posting those online. So how can we do the same thing? How can we use the city's website, for example, to highlight different cultures within our community? And how can we? So, yeah, that's one. And then how do we use our, there's the cable channel for the city? And like, how do we use those spaces and those places to highlight, again, different cultures? I think we could be creative about it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Rowena, for your willingness to serve. We'll be acting on your nomination shortly. You don't have to be at the meeting when we do. It's usually a very quick vote. This is really our chance to interact with you, and we'll keep you posted. And I really appreciate your service and the perspective that you will bring. And I can't help but respond that your son went to the high school my kids went to, your son went to the college that I went to, and then he went to the law school where my wife works. So you've met our family connection very well. Thank you and good luck.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Goodbye.
All right, next, forfeitures. And I'm not sure who is presenting, but whoever is, go ahead. Oh, it looks like Brad Arlitt.
Council President, it's Brad Arlitt, captain with the Police Department. And then I've got our Assistant City Attorney and the genius behind knowing all the things that we need to know about asset seizure and forfeiture, Matt Folsom, is going to be the majority of the presentation. I'm going to try to go ahead and screen share our, our presentation so that you guys can all follow along with some of the things that we've noted on there.
Okay, here it comes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so the things that we want to cover today for sure is part of the reason that our, that we have, let me clear that. Okay, that we have this asset forfeiture policy in place and the seizure capability. This is primarily aimed at deterring the repeat offender on some of the drug crimes in particular by removing the profit incentive. One of the things that we see, especially over the last three to four years, is we have a lot of drug activity that is driven by cartel-connected individuals. So they're dropping off literally pounds or kilos of narcotics and then coming back and collecting the cash. In the meantime, when we're doing cases on those people, we're seizing that money as part of the investigation, depriving the cartel of money, and then also depriving the drug dealer of money that they need to buy more drugs. And we also know, and we've presented to council in previous informational sessions, that our property crimes here are driven by drugs. So we're actually hitting the kind of proverbial two birds with one stone by being able to do these major drug cases and use the legal seizure and then forfeiture process. At times, when we do burglary cases and seizures, we are also getting some of the property back to the victims of property crimes. Part of the seizure process, when we have our officers that are, that are co-located with the Safe Streets Task Force and the DEA, we have cooperation with our federal and state partners on the asset forfeiture sharing with those agencies. And then we also have the benefit of extending our budget through these supplemental funds that we are able to seize to purchase things. And we'll cover all of those things during the presentation. And some of the things that we've been able to purchase, we'll cover those at the end. And then Matt Folsom is going to cover some of the process and some of the legal requirements for some of the seizure and forfeiture process. And then at the end, we'll have some time for any questions on things that we may not have ended up being able to answer.
Thank you, Captain. Hello, council members. I'm Matt Folsom. How's everybody doing today?
Good, Matt. Great.
Yep. Hi, everyone's on mute. Thank you. So you can see at the top of this slide, it says transparency, integrity, accountability. That's really what our Asset Seizure and Forfeiture Program is all about. We want to be transparent. We're not hiding the ball at all. We're accountable to the city council, to the mayor, to the chief, and integrity. The way I kind of describe that is, the phrase I use, is we always want to wear the white hat. An example of that from this past year is we seized and then forfeited a vehicle that was used in the sale of a controlled substance. And there was a lien holder on the vehicle. The lien holder never filed a claim, even though they were an innocent owner. And we won our forfeiture hearing against the person who was in possession and control. So it was the police department. After that process, that lien holder, that innocent owner contacted us and said, we didn't know, we needed to file a claim, even though they received notice that said they had to file a claim. The right thing to do in that case was essentially, we couldn't gift the car back to the lien holder, so we had to release it to the claimant, the person who was in possession and control. And then that car dealership went and repossessed the car. We didn't have to give that car back, but we did. That's an example of what integrity means to us. So buckle up, here we go. Crash course on asset seizure and forfeiture. How come that's not working?
I have to use the, yeah, just see the arrow on the black screen?
Yeah. There are a number of federal and state statutes that authorize seizure and forfeiture. We're not going to cover all of them. They are all different and unique, but all fairly similar. The majority of cases that are prosecuted by us for asset seizure and forfeiture are controlled substances. That's under RCW 6950-505. Seizure of personal property may be made incident to an arrest or search warrant. Those are the only two triggers for asset seizure and forfeiture. If it is subject to a search warrant, seizure subject to a search warrant, you have a judicial determination of probable cause. You have a judge saying, yes, there is probable cause that this property was used in the prescribed manner. And we're going to be talking about used to facilitate the sale of a controlled substance or proceeds acquired from the sale of controlled substance. You don't have that same judicial determination when a seizure is incident to an arrest. But what you have is you have that officer, based on his training or her training, experience, and independent discretion, based on their facts of the case, saying, yes, there is probable cause. And the big distinction between a criminal arrest of a person and asset seizure and forfeiture is, on the criminal arrest, it's that individual who engaged in the criminal activity, and there's probable cause that person engaged in that criminal activity. That's the arrest of the person. You essentially substitute the property for the person with asset seizure and forfeiture. So that property was bad. That's a good way to look at it. That property was used to facilitate the sale or was proceeded of the sale. So after there is that seizure triggered by judicial determination or an arrest, the law enforcement agency has to provide notice within 15 days of that seizure. So the clock runs immediately. That notice needs to go to any person having any known interest in that seized property. So we can go back to that vehicle example. You've got someone who is potentially driving the vehicle. They're in possession and control. You could have a legal owner, they have an interest. You can have a registered owner, they have an interest. You can have a dealership that has a lien on the vehicle. These are four different entities. Only one of them is the lawful owner. They all get notice. We cast our notice net wide. We err on the side of mailing out the notice or personal service. Those are the two methods you can serve, personally handing it to them or U.S. first-class mail. So there's a seizure, 15 days to provide notice to basically anyone who might have an interest. And then there's 45 days for someone to file a claim, and that needs to be in writing to the agency. Once that person files a claim, every claimant is entitled to a reasonable opportunity to be heard. And so right there, we've got notice, we've got opportunity to be heard, that's due process. This hearing is before the chief law enforcement officer or their designee. So what is happening all over the country in Washington used to happen here but isn't anymore is the chief of police or the law enforcement agency essentially designates the supervisor of that seizing unit, right? So you've got that, let's say lieutenant, who has officers working underneath them, they're operating under their, that lieutenant's guidance, that lieutenant's training, and then you have that lieutenant determining whether that seizure was valid or not. That's lawful, but it doesn't look good. That's got the appearance of impropriety on it because it's the same agency making the determination on whether or not they followed the law. So before I started, so earlier than 2014, what we started doing in Spokane is designating the city's hearing examiner as the chief's designee. So every year, the chief writes a letter, designates our hearing examiner to hear our asset seizure and forfeiture cases, which is great. Now we have this independent third party making that determination for every single claimant who files a claim. In every case, the burden is upon the law enforcement agency to establish that the property is subject to forfeiture. And remember, that burden is probable cause. Probable cause that the property was used in the prescribed manner, either as proceeds for the sale of a controlled substance or used to facilitate the sale of a controlled substance. If we don't meet our burden, we have to pay attorney's fees. Where the claimant prevails, the claimant is entitled to attorney's fees. And going back to the very first slide, the majority of the cases, all the cases that we bring are to weaken the criminal, to remove the profit incentive from the criminal activity. A lot of our cases, probably the average, is $1,000, give or take. The attorney's fees for one of these, going through discovery, going through the hearing process, definitely outweighs that $1,000. So the stakes are really high for us, which is why we scrutinize and look at every single one of these cases before it moves forward because we're going backwards if we lose. So what can you do if the property is actually forfeited? What can you do with the property? You can retain it for official use. You can sell it, you can destroy it, you can forward it to the DEA. So a good example of this retained for official use are with vehicles. We have a pretty robust undercover operations with the Spokane Police Department, and those vehicles get made or identified as an undercover police vehicle pretty easily. And once that happens, it's no longer an effective undercover vehicle. So having new vehicles coming onto the rotation is an extremely effective law enforcement Every quarter, we're required to submit reports to the state treasurer. And then, once a year, we remit 10% of the net proceeds of all forfeiture proceeds to the state treasurer. So 10% goes to the state. That happens once a year. Forfeited property and net proceeds not required to be paid to the state treasurer, so the 90% that we get to keep shall be retained by the seizing law enforcement agency exclusively for the expansion and improvement of controlled substances-related law enforcement activity. Now, we're talking about RCW 6950-505 as our example here. There are other statutes like 10-105-010. If the property is used to facilitate any felony or proceeds from any felony, those forfeiture proceeds can be used for the expansion and improvement of any law enforcement activity. So that's broader. But the majority of our forfeiture funds are drug-related. Those funds narrowly tailored, the use has to be for controlled substances-related law enforcement activity.
Hey, Matt, before you go on, just a quick question.
Yeah, thanks.
On the law enforcement drug control-related, would that include youth programming like the DARE program? Is there, is there an argument to be made that that would be a fair use of those funds?
There's a really good, that's a really good question, Council President. And we get to the DOJ Guide for Permissible Impermissible Uses and community-based programs is a permissible use. So I think there's a valid argument that DARE programs is a permissible use. The DOJ caps that at 25,000, and we do cover that a little bit later. So, yeah, absolutely. I think it's a permissible use, but there are some more kinds of strings attached that we'll cover in a little bit.
But in, in terms of the, so that's the federal money, but in terms of the state statute, that 25,000 cap wouldn't be there? Is that fair to say?
Correct. So that 25,000 cap is for the equitable sharing funds. There is no such cap for the state.
Okay, thanks.
Forfeiture fund. Yep.
Hey, just a quick question.
Yep, great.
Drug-related, that seems like it's pretty broad. Would that, if somebody is simply committing a crime while high, is that drug-related? Or do they have to be in the process of selling drugs, distributing drugs? What, what makes it drug-related?
Sure. So we can go back to that probable cause, used to facilitate the sale of controlled substances, right? So, or proceeds from the sale of a controlled substance. So personal use doesn't apply here. There has to be probable cause of dealing. So one of the things we did back in 2014 is we found this essentially Best Practices Guide for Asset Seizure and Forfeiture. It is created by the United States Department of Justice. We have put all of these 10 best practices into our policy and procedure. I'm not going to go through, sorry, the phone's ringing. We're not going to go through all 10 of these, but I'm going to give just one example. So number four, if no judicial finding of probable cause is secured, the seizing, or the seizure shall be approved in writing by an agency attorney or a supervisory level official. And that's directly out of our Spokane Police Department Asset Forfeiture Policy, 606.6. So the way this works in practice is you've got that line officer making the determination, yes, this is proceeds from a sale of a controlled substance, or it was used to facilitate that sale. It's seized as evidence. Then they submit that, hey, I think this might be a good seizure forfeiture case. That gets reviewed by the agency attorney or the supervisor of the civil enforcement unit at the lieutenant level. And we look at the facts of the case, the report, we talk to the officer, we look at the property to make sure there's that nexus of criminal activity to the property and that we've met that burden of probable cause. And then we sign that intake form. The seizure and forfeiture wheel process doesn't start without that independent determination. That's not required by the statute, but that's one of the things we've put into place as an example of how we're trying to operate our program. So this is City of Bellevue versus Cashiers Check. It's a Washington case that essentially says the federal forfeiture statutes are so similar to the state forfeiture statutes, we can rely on the federal interpretation for our state interpretation. And we use that to kind of go to the United States Department of Justice. They create this Guide to Equitable Sharing. And as Council President pointed out, this is for the equitable sharing program, but it is a good guide for all asset seizure and forfeiture. If you Google search U.S. DOJ Guide to Equitable Sharing, you can download this whole thing. You can email me, I'll send you the link. And what's following is essentially excerpts straight from the DOJ Guide to Equitable Sharing. Forfeiture funds shall be used by law enforcement agencies for law enforcement purposes only. And this is consistent, you can go to the state statutes here in Washington, and you can see the legislative intent. They want to weaken criminals, remove the profit incentive in crime, and have those forfeiture funds be used exclusively for law enforcement purposes.
Am I good with it? What do you mean?
So here are some examples of permissible uses, operations and investigations, so reward money, recruitment, agency accreditation, payments to informants, purchase of evidence, buyback programs, and buy money. And the captain will come on later and talk a little bit about why payments to informants and buy money are so essential to our operations. and buy money are so essential to our operations, and that's why they're bold, but they're, you know, direct permissible uses from the Department of Justice. Some more examples, public safety, detention facilities, so you can purchase, you can lease, you can strip.
Hey, Matt, Matt, I'm sorry. It took me a while to get off mute.
Thank you.
Just going back, I just have a kind of a question. In terms of the city versus the federal government drug enforcement agency, I'm always a little confused about why we, as local officers, seem to spend a lot of money on confidential informants and buy money and things like that when the, you know, the drug war, so to speak, seems like it's a federal issue, and we've got the FBI and the DEA and all that. And so could you talk a little bit about, you know, what's our role in that? Why are we kind of the lead agency around here on that when it seems like it's a much international issue and a federal issue? I'm just wondering what that is.
It's a good question. I'm going to defer to the captain.
Yep.
Yeah, so if I understood the question is, why does local law enforcement, in this case Spokane Police Department, take the main responsibility for the enforcement on the drug cases or drug laws in the city?
Yes, instead of the federal government. Yeah.
Sure. So the federal government, you know, I mean, at, you know, in places like Spokane, they do drug enforcement, but they're going to operate at a really top-tier level. Police department used to focus on neighborhood problem houses, which was kind of your people who were basically dealing to support their own addiction. And they were really wreaking havoc in neighborhoods, and we'd get complaints, you know, dozens of cars hourly coming up ruining the quality of life for people in the neighborhood. And we actually have managed to resolve a lot of those problem houses through another branch of effort with our civil enforcement unit by putting some of those places in receivership, dealing with them with the neighborhood resource officers, and using the nuisance organizations to deal with them and getting those shut down. What we primarily focus on is mid-level narcotics dealing, that would be things that would be too small scale for the federal authorities to be interested in. And what we find is that the people that we focus on that are dealing drugs are the ones that are really fueling the addiction issues that fuel property crime. So those are, that is our focus. It's, you know, I have to say, it's probably two-thirds to three-quarters, maybe methamphetamine, and the balance is pretty much, it could even be as high as a third, heroin and opioids. So I mean, it's kind of a public health and safety issue, really, as much as a law enforcement issue, again, because of the fact that, you know, we look at these things, and the drug addiction drives property crimes. You know, you cannot, you could not have somebody employed full-time at a minimum wage and actually get to work and make enough money to support their addiction to opioids or heroin.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, Captain, I guess I'll just talk on that a little bit. I don't know that we've actually taken care of a lot of these problem houses. I routinely hear about these houses that are pushing a lot of crime and drugs in our neighborhoods, and I'm here all the time that we don't have the resources or the ability to actually take care of them. And that's why they are essentially left to remain for years and years to operate as they do.
Well, so yes, there are a lot of them. We, just today, Matt and I were looking at a presentation that we got from one of the realtors that works with the attorneys of some of the houses that go into receivership. But also understand, and maybe it's a different topic for a different study session, there's a lengthy process for those, and some of the precinct captains might be able to speak to it better, but the neighborhood resource officer has to get X amount of complaints to be able to take some enforcement. They can also derail that process by getting compliance. Ultimately, when they've done probably several months' worth of work, we'll end up with a multi-page, 25 to 40-page affidavit and a binder about that thick of supporting documentation to be able to put just one house into receivership. But it's a lot better than what we were doing five years ago, when we didn't have some of those nuisance and abatement tools to go after that, and then we didn't have anything. But there are a fair number of nuisance houses around the city, and some of them are nuisance houses for, you know, for a variety of other things.
I do want to just tag, I think we do want to have a study session on, again, a refresher on the nuisance housing, and probably, you know, we'll have Matt Folsom back with some other people. So that is a great tag, and both, really in terms of two things. One, to Councilmember Cathcart's point of, hey, maybe we need to make that program more robust to speed it up. And then also, I've been hearing a lot of concerns lately on behalf of the tenant advocacy community and racial equity issues and things like that. So it's just a great chance to have a refresher on that. So, so thanks. I think you answered my question on the federal versus the city, so I appreciate that.
Perfect. I'm going to let Matt come back in and finish.
Yep.
Thanks. Yeah, I would love to talk about nuisance properties. I'm passionate about that, so sign me up. Going back, one of the main reasons we engage in asset seizure and forfeiture at the local level is to weaken criminals. So an example of that is you've got a dealer, a local dealer here in the city, they're operating below the level that the federal government's going to look at. If they are just going through the criminal justice program, they're going to get booked into jail, and then they're going to be released within 24 hours and likely put into drug court, which is amazing, because then they can get into treatment, and if they engage in that treatment, they get off that criminal path and they rehabilitate their life, they're no longer in the criminal justice program. My experience in, you know, almost 15 years now as a criminal and civil prosecutor, those individuals aren't going to go all-in on that treatment and change their life until they're ready. We can't force them. So for the people who don't take that path and aren't ready, they're released within 24 hours, they're going right back to that criminal activity. What the asset seizure and forfeiture does, it removes their vehicle, it removes their cash, it removes their drug stash. Now, all of a sudden, it's a lot harder for that individual to start supplying our community with that controlled substance without those tools. So that's just, I know the captain already answered the question, but I can't help myself. All right. So we were talking about you can purchase public safety facilities, and here is a key distinction that the Department of Justice puts out, and I think it's kind of illustrative of the guidelines. So improvements should not be made on leased property or space, since the law enforcement agency will not benefit from the improvements upon termination of the lease. And that makes a lot of sense. You can lease the property, you're getting the benefit. But if you make improvements on that leased property, ultimately, those forfeiture funds are being used for the benefit of that landlord, so that would be an impermissible use. And that's kind of how fine this gets decided here. So equipment, equipment is a big area for forfeiture fund use that's permissible. Examples from the Department of Justice include furniture, office supplies, copiers, safes, fitness equipment, computers, body armor, uniforms, firearms, radios, telephones, surveillance equipment, vehicles, animals, basically all the types of equipment that are necessary for public safety. Here we go, community-based organization. So right out of the Department of Justice, permissible uses include a drug treatment facility, job skills, drug and crime prevention youth programs. We talked about the 25,000 annual limit that is only applicable to equitable sharing and not the other forfeiture statutes. What is still required is law enforcement approval. So that chief of police still needs to approve, yes, this expands and improves law enforcement activity, and then subrecipients have to be monitored. So you can't, for example, just say, here, DARE program, here's $20,000 of forfeiture funds, go do great work. You've got to manage and monitor how that DARE program spends those forfeiture funds to make sure even those subrecipients are expanding and improving law enforcement activity. And if you don't do that, then you're out of compliance, based on our interpretation of the move. So now we get into some examples of impermissible uses. Any use by non-law enforcement personnel, no endowments or scholarships, obviously no uses contrary to law, no appearance of political gain or personal benefit, and I just want to emphasize appearance. You may not be having any kind of political gain or personal benefit, you just can't even have the appearance of that. So it's a high burden. No food, no beverages, no social events, no entertainers, no cash accounts, no prepaid cards. And the prepaid cards makes total sense, right? Because that can't be managed and monitored. No transfer to other law enforcement agencies, you can't pay lawsuit costs out of forfeiture proceeds, no loans, you can't stand up a money laundering operation with forfeiture proceeds. So a good rule of thumb is any kind of forfeiture fund use has to be managed, has to be monitored, has to be used for the expansion and improvement of law enforcement activity. And the penalties are severe. So to go back to Council President's point about why are we looking at federal rules? It's because the United States Department of Justice is essentially holding everybody accountable to make sure we follow the rules. And if individuals don't, if agencies don't, we can be subject to civil enforcement. So that's civil fines, civil penalties, civil fees, and also federal criminal prosecution, which I take very seriously, so we make sure we follow the rules. Agencies may not commit to the spending of sharing funds for a certain purpose in advance. So you can't commit forfeiture funds in advance of actually forfeiture. And so that's a distinction between seizure and forfeiture. Seizure is when the police department or the agency takes possession. Forfeiture is when the ownership of that property actually transfers to the agency. And so you can see the policy behind this. If you had an agency that said, we're going to spend $100,000 on vehicles next year, all of a sudden, that's a lot of pressure on the agency to hit that mark. And now you have a financial incentive driving asset seizure and forfeiture instead of removing the profit incentive from crime. So you can't spend it until you have it. The Department of Justice may terminate sharing with law enforcement agencies that are not permitted by their governing body to benefit directly from equitable sharing. So if you have some kind of governing body that steps in between the law enforcement agency and the use of forfeiture funds, the Department of Justice can say, yep, you're in violation, we're not going to engage in the equitable sharing program with you anymore, and then that triggers civil fines and potentially criminal prosecution as well. I'm going to turn it over to the captain. The next three are essentially examples of how the department has spent forfeiture funds over the last six years or so.
Okay, so as Matt mentioned, this is just a kind of a recap for a reminder in some cases and explanation of what we do spend some of the money on. So there's a look back, you know, 2020 so far, we spent close to $73,500 on confidential informant funds. Last year was about $102,000. And so it varies from year to year, and part of that is based on two things. One, how much of the criminal proceeds money we have seized and forfeited, as well as our level of activity. These are some of the used vehicles that we've been able to purchase for undercover use over the past few years, and, you know, we have a, we buy reasonable vehicles that are, you know, well-used, but still have some life on them, they're checked out by the city And then we've also utilized that to further some of our technology needs with the city through computer equipment software. Yeah, one of the, I think one of the important things going back to this slide with the confidential informant funds is if we don't have that money, then we don't have anything to work with in terms of confidential informants or the ability to buy drugs. And then, you know, we'd essentially be just treading water until we got, until we got some money.
So what would that do to the forfeiture funds?
The key as well on that is, and I think this kind of goes back to the question about how much of the money are you able to use on, you know, community-based programs? Once there's no more money there, and if we use too much on community-based programs, we're not using it to purchase some of the vehicles or the confidential informant funds and buy money, then the, essentially, the bank account would be empty, and then we wouldn't have the ability to replenish that and do any of those things, including use money for community outreach programs.
So quite a question for you guys. And I guess first off, I think bringing DARE back would be, I think, a really positive thing to do and a great thing for the community, regardless of where the funding comes to pay for it. I think DARE is a program that should be back employed in our schools. But my question is specifically, do we employ any form of, in Spokane, non-judicial or administrative civil asset forfeiture where there aren't even necessarily charges filed or charges are still pending, and yet we've seized those items from someone? And then also, just an additional question, what happens if we've seized items from an individual who, a criminal who's been arrested, and they are later found to be not guilty? Now, I understand there's multiple hearings for the asset forfeiture as well as for that individual, but if they're found to be not guilty of the crime, what happens in that case with the seized assets?
I'll have Matt explain the nuances of some of those things. I think to answer, you know, part of your first question related to the non-judicial seizure funds and everything, I think a lot of people that have studied this issue have looked at, maybe, I don't know if it was New York Times, Washington Post ran a whole series of articles a few years ago on asset forfeiture, and, you know, kind of highlighted how some of these agencies or multi-agencies were deploying teams like to the airport in Cincinnati, and it's like, oh, you've got $5,000 you can't account for, we're just seizing that. And we don't do any of those kinds of seizures. Our seizures are all linked, traceable and tracked to ongoing criminal activity or the proceeds of criminal activity. And as Matt mentioned, that's where the supervisor for the unit and/or, in most cases, Matt himself as the attorney, review the facts of the case before moving forward with the seizure under Washington state law. And then we have that, those other fail safes of the hearings officer, who actually is the one that then decides that it's forfeited. So we've got a lot of steps there to prevent, you know, the appearance of those type of things that you might have seen from around the country where, you know, I mean, really, there were agencies that were, I think, in some cases, forced to or took advantage of seizure laws to be able to fund themselves. And in our case, we use the legal mechanisms to take the money from the criminal enterprise to use it to further law enforcement purposes. I'll let Matt address some of the things about the steps of what happens if somebody's found not guilty and how those exact things work.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to have some questions.
So it kind of depends on which statute you are seizing under. So if it is under RCW 10-105-010, the property was in the commission of a felony, forfeiture is dependent upon conviction of that felony. So there has to be a criminal conviction of the felony. If it gets pled down to a misdemeanor, no forfeiture. If it gets dismissed, no forfeiture. That's for felony. For drugs, it's different. RCW 69505 does not require a conviction, and all of the asset seizure and forfeiture is administrative, right? So that is the due process, the judicial process, it's administrative. It's through the agency, sending out notice, receiving the claim, setting up a hearing through the agency's designee, right? We're using the city's hearing examiner for that, and then we still have to meet our burden at that hearing. There's also a provision in 69505, I cut like half of the slides out of this because we were limited to 30 minutes, but you asked about... But you asked about it. So any claimant can remove their hearing to a court of competent jurisdiction. So what that means is any claimant can choose to have their forfeiture case heard by a district court judge or a superior court judge, depending on the value of the property. So they don't have to be subjected to our administrative process. It could be in the courts. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. But I guess, and obviously, you didn't write the law. The legislature did. But I'm wondering, what is the thought process behind allowing the seizure of property when somebody has been found not guilty? I guess that's my question from a Fourth or Fifth Amendment standpoint. I mean, I just, I don't understand. If somebody is found not guilty of a crime, then how can their property be seized?
I think you can go into RCW 69505 and look at the legislative history of that state statute. They talk a lot about how law enforcement agencies spend a lot of time and resources trying to combat controlled substance use and how that's connected to property crime and violent crime in our communities. And so they gave this tool to law enforcement agencies to replenish all of those expenses that go into this kind of investigation work. And there's a lot of due process that we talked about, right? So it's not like there's no process for this. There's a determination of probable cause, either by a judicial official with a search warrant or by the arresting officer. That gets reviewed by the agency attorney or the supervisor. That has to be proved by that independent third-party hearing examiner or to the superior court judge before there can be any kind of forfeiture. So just because there's a process that's different than the criminal track doesn't mean that there isn't any kind of process. There is sufficient due process for this.
Oh, and I hear that. And let me just state, too, that first slide you showed in your presentation, kind of laying out some of the key details of this. I mean, I agree with most all of that. I think that that all makes a ton of sense. And I think you obviously want to remove, you know, the criminal incentive. You want to remove some of their resources to commit further crimes. But for me, just like where I have the biggest hangup is just if an individual is found not guilty of a crime, you know, then they're not guilty. And really, then anything that's taken from them just seems like it's taken in bad faith at that point. And I recognize the law is the law, and it says what it says. I just have a big hangup when it comes to somebody who has been found not guilty by a jury of their peers, that the proof, the evidence was not there for them to go to jail or to be sentenced in some way. And yet we still hang on to those possessions. And anyway, there's got to be a better mechanism to deal with that situation. So anyway, that's my...
Absolutely. I can see why you would have that position. Let's go back to the drug court example. So you've got someone, their vehicle, their re-up money were seized, and now they're going through drug court and they earn a dismissal. If that buy money and that vehicle weren't seized, they would probably just go straight back to engaging in that criminal activity. Did you want to?
And that, well, so that's a great, I think you made a great point there with community court. And I think that's where perhaps there needs to be more sidebars as to who's going through community court, what those outcomes are. You know, if they're simply being dismissed because they made it through the program, not because they were found not guilty, that to me is a little different than if they were actually found not guilty by a jury of their peers.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing I want to comment on along with that is I think that our seizure and forfeiture program, probably compared to many agencies around the country, is very disciplined. And we come at it with a measured approach. We want to make sure we are taking only criminal proceeds or property. You know, maybe it's a vehicle that is a criminal proceed or related to the crime. I don't have exact numbers. You know, that would be something to obtain from the prosecutor's office. But I mean, I think the vast majority of these people take a plea deal in which they're admitting guilt. Very few go to trial. And of the ones that do go to trial, I mean, next to none are found not guilty where it's connected to some sort of large seizure. Now, we're making these seizures. This is not, you know, a situation where we just go out in 15 minutes and make a buy and then seize the money, the drugs, and everything else. These are longer-term investigations. It could be as short as three days, but it might be three weeks or three months. So this is a situation where we have very well documented how these things are going. And in some cases, our buy money that we've used is actually in the cash that we're seizing. So it's, you know, very difficult for them to say, "Well, I got this from selling a car, doing cash work, building decks under the table," or something of that nature. These are all things where the evidentiary benchmark has been well exceeded in terms of the fact that these are criminal proceeds, criminal funds that are criminal proceeds from activity that we want to put a stop to in the city of Spokane.
No, thank you for those responses. And I'm not trying to be accusatory with that.
No, I totally get it. I mean, we live in this world. So I think Matt, you know, and I are both happy to thoroughly explain how it works and how the steps work, because I think those are, you know, legitimate concerns. And that's why I brought up, you know, I know that the article went around. It went around in law enforcement circles as well, that several-part article from a few years ago about some of these, you know, entities that were literally walking through airports with a dog and stopping people that, you know, had a satchel or something of money. They could be an art collector. They could be a coin broker going to a show. They could have been coming from their, you know, settling out their mom's estate, and they're just snatching money. We're way far away from that. That's not what our program is about, and we wouldn't do that.
No, thank you.
All right. I have another couple of questions for Matt. If you can get him back. Oh, sorry. Betsy Wilkerson, sorry, Councilmember Wilkerson. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Beck. And it's just an observation, and somebody can get back with me later. So I hear the side of the police, and I'm not challenging what you've got going on. What I'm not really hearing is the side of the one that's being accused. What that representation looks like to them. Where's the equity in that piece? And you kind of had me to where they mostly all take plea deals. And that is just a little disturbing. So it feels like a David and Goliath kind of scenario to me. And so someone could get back to me offline and take me a little further down that educational road.
Okay, and so just to clarify, once we refer those charges to the prosecutor's office, of course, then the plea deal and whatever settlement on the criminal case they reach on theirs is out of our hands. So, you know, of course, the person that has counsel, whether that's public defender or private attorney. And so that all happens over on the other side, between the prosecutor's office, the defense bar, and the person that was referred on those criminal charges. So we don't have anything necessarily to do with the plea deal. You know, not in drug cases, and a lot of times not even in a property crimes case. Usually, it's going to be something in terms of a robbery or homicide case. The investigators may be communicating with the prosecutor's office in terms of, you know, what the plea deal might look like on some of those things. But we don't have any influence of that. We're not driving that. But, you know, in terms of other questions that you have, Councilperson Wilkerson, regarding, you know, other things that you'd want to know about, about how the other side of the seizure process works, I'd be happy to supply you with any of that information as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members while Mr. Folsom comes to the mic?
Hi, Matt. Can I just comment on the David Goliath? So there's been some protections in case law to kind of address that. One of them is that attorney's fees, right? So if we lose, we have to pay the cost for that. And there's been case law that comes out. Essentially, if we lose on any individual piece of property, that is losing. So an example is we could have $20,000 in a safe, wrapped up in rubber bands with a drug ledger, with the controlled substances that's seized, along with a brand-new Denver Broncos jersey that's hanging on the back of the couch. They think, oh, he doesn't have a job. Anything that was purchased was purchased with drug proceeds. The hearing examiner decides differently and says, "Yeah, the $20,000, that's forfeited. But the Denver Broncos jersey, you didn't make that connection. You didn't prove, you didn't trace back to proceeds." We lose the whole case. We have to pay attorney's fees on the whole thing, even though, you know, the value would look like what you want. So that's one of the protections case law has put into place for that David V. Goliath question.
All right, thanks. And we're over time, but this is super interesting and helpful. And first, I just wanted to commend Mr. Folsom and Captain Arlitt. This presentation was really informative and well put together. And so I really appreciate that. And then now I'm going to have some very rapid-fire questions for you, Mr. Folsom, just because of time. So the first is, somebody wondered about the sharing of proceeds. And my understanding is that when our police sees something, the only sharing we have to do is the 10% to the state. Is that fair?
That's correct. There's actually a prohibition against, you know, using your funds for another agency. The seized agency has to be the agency that benefits.
But the sharing that we talk about is when the state or the federal government seizes something, they're sharing money with us.
Right. And so that's why there are different rules depending on what statute you're seizing under. So when there's a joint investigation with the feds and the local police, the feds then basically take that case and then share back with the local agent.
All right. Secondly, in terms of the standard of proof at the hearing level, I think you said you have to prove probable cause, which is, you know, not beyond a reasonable doubt, not more likely than not. It's just whether a reasonable officer has a belief of a fair probability of a connection between the property and the money. Is that fair to say?
Right. So in a civil hearing, it's preponderance of the evidence. But we have to prove probable cause by a preponderance of the evidence. So there has to be probable cause for the seizure and a preponderance of the evidence that that property was used in the prescribed manner.
But probable cause is only a fair probability by a reasonable officer with the totality of the circumstances.
It's a lower standard beyond a reasonable doubt.
Yeah. Secondly, is there any state prohibition of us putting a higher standard of proof on it?
No, I don't think so. I think that would be permissible. We definitely couldn't lower the bar.
Right. And then also, I don't think that we provide a public defender for people who don't have sufficient income to hire an attorney in those hearings because it's civil. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. There's only a mandate to provide counsel for criminal prosecutions. So if somebody wants counsel for a civil lawsuit, which that's what these are, essentially, they've got to afford one themselves.
So if we provided counsel to indigent people, there's no prohibition on that, is there, if we wanted to?
I'm not sure. I'd have to research that a little bit more. My initial gut response would be that would be gifting of public funds.
Okay. And then the last one is if we did make a condition of conviction, kind of as Councilmember Cathcart, we could do that if we wanted to voluntarily, I assume.
I don't have a final answer on that. I'd want to do more research. There's nothing that I can think of immediately that would prevent that.
Okay, great. All right, that's all my rapid-fire questions. Thanks again for all your great work for the city, and appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to budget. We're going to be having budget conversations like this over the next few weeks at every study session, every committee meeting. This is a start. We have a little less time than we thought, but again, it's just one of many. So we have a hard stop at 12:30. But I'll turn it over to whoever wants to talk budget from the administration. Thanks.
Sorry, councilmembers. This is Tanya, and I'm trying to share my screen with you. So give me just one moment here. Okay, I hope all of you can see this by now. First of all, what we're going to try to cover is just give you some preliminary budget overview. And you're going to hear this a few times with each work session. But specifically today, we're going to cover just a little bit of the Health and Human Services and Public Safety Services and cover really some of the highlights and decisions around those items. Right out of the gate, I want to say that this is still a preliminary budget, and it is subject to change based on your feedback of how these next sessions go. And the mayor will make her final proposed budget presented to you November 2nd. After that, we will begin the public hearing process. I do want to give a big shout out. We've got a lot of department heads that oversee Health and Human Services and Public Safety and directors. But a big shout out to them and their staff for all the hard work that they've done clear back in June, July, and a lot of heavy lifting going on in August. A really big kudos to Paul Engosi, who has coordinated all of this financial data that has come in from the departments and put these reports together for you. So I also want to give one more special thanks to the mayor and the city council members that did participate in her review of these documents when they came in. And we sat down together and reviewed a lot of the issues that were facing the city so that we could put together and really focus on the city's highest priorities and make sure that they're addressed, given our very limited funding. So I'm going to start because it started back in July with revenue. And all of the city council members, we did update those revenues and then gave you our estimated revenues for 2021. The current revenues for all of our funds and all of our sources is about $901 million. This may slightly change before we get to that final proposed. But right now in this preliminary, it's $901 million. But when you look at total resources, and by that, I mean current revenues that we anticipate receiving during the fiscal year, as well as fund balance and retained earnings. So fund balance retained earnings is simply excess sources that were retained from prior years, typically for specific purposes. For example, in our utilities, we intentionally retain earnings so that we can construct capital when it is actually needed. But when you take into account planned use of fund balance retained earnings, our total resources for 2021 are $989 million. Now, how are those going to be used? This particular slide shows $989 million, so a balanced proposed budget. And you can see this is broken up, really representing the services that the city provides by major groups. You can see the largest pie share there is infrastructure utilities. This is not surprising. This is very common for cities. General government does appear to be a larger pie. But this is also where we have our pensions and our medical expenses and our insurance and workers' compensation, as well as all of our general governmental services that people come to expect. You see, building and economic development is about 2%. Our cultural services, which is primarily libraries and recreation, and library is 10%. That's where we're investing in that quality of care. And then we have public safety and our judicial services. That's 20% of our budget, the third-largest slice of pie. And then Health and Human Services, 5% of our total budget. So that's how we spend the money. But how we account for it, and this is kind of the tricky part, is we account for it in separate funds. Most folks do struggle with fund accounting, and I don't expect everybody to understand fund accounting. But I wanted to show you, this is how we slice and dice those services into our different checkbooks. You can see the general fund is 21%. When we're looking at the different checkbooks that make up all of the services, again, still totally $989 million, general fund is 21%. If you look at your preliminary report on pages 13 and 14, you see the very detailed listing of all of our funds or checkbooks. We have a lot of dedicated funds, and that includes our trust and agency funds, as well as all of our special revenue funds, our debt service funds, our capital funds. Those are all dedicated. And then we have internal service funds that sweep facilities on technology, accounting, and purchasing. And that is also where we account for our employee benefits and insurance funds. And then enterprise funds, which again, should not be surprised that it comprises 33%. Most of the time, jurisdictions really focus on your general fund. And that is because this is the fund where most of our taxes go to. So our property tax, the majority of our sales tax go into this fund. And it's also where a lot of our general functions flow through this fund. So the general fund usually tends to take center stage. So as we proceed, we're going to try to focus a little bit on and clarify what is general fund, what is not, but feel free to ask any questions as we proceed. So focusing on Health and Human Services, we've kind of broken out specifically drilling down to about 5% of the total preliminary budget and what it is comprised of. So it's our housing programs, our community development, and human services. You can see for 2021, $46 million. This is a significant increase over the 2020 adopted budget. And most of this is coming from our human services grants, CDBG, ESG, et cetera. And we do have folks, Department Ziegler is here and can answer some of those questions. But a lot of the increase is attributed to those human services grants. The general fund only makes up 7% of this total $46 million. Most of our Health and Human Services are funded from grants, but not entirely. So it does fluctuate from year to year depending on those awarded grants. Moving into Public Safety Services, you can see this is a grouping of police and fire, our municipal court services, our attorneys, and traffic calming measures. Now, when we talk about transfers and grants, the grants are obviously based on awarded and how that supports those various services. The transfer is largely what the general fund transfers to a fire EMS fund. So the total appropriation is $202 million. But if you look at the pie chart, this pie chart of $143 million is more representative of how much is directly provided to those services. So we take out the transfers and we take out the grants, and then you see what the direct funding goes to support. And you clearly see that police and fire are the lion's share of our public safety services. In total, they make up 20% of the total preliminary budget. Right now, this is less than a 1% increase over 2020 adopted. And that is primarily because of how we, in this preliminary budget, addressed vacancies for police and fire. We did a three and a half year look back on those vacancies and applied the annual average of actual vacancies to their respective budgets. It does maintain the behavioral health unit, and we're going to get into that in just a little bit. The general fund, when you look at these services, supports 86% of the total budget for all of our public safety funds. There are some special revenues that go to support some of our judicial services and traffic calming measures, and that's where the other 14% really comes from. Some of the highlights for all of you.
Tanya, just a couple of quick questions. Going back to the human services, how much of the human services budget in this preliminary budget are coming from the general fund for this year? And how does that compare to the amount of money from 2020 and 2019? I'm just wondering how that actual amount of money is different? If you know, off the top of your head.
Off the top of my head, I don't. But I believe Paul is looking it up right now, so we will get an answer to you momentarily.
Now, one other question I'd saved up, and that is, I was trying to figure out how much money we project in general fund revenues by the end of 2020 versus how much we projected in the first budget for 2020? What the delta is between that, so that we can kind of measure the COVID effect in terms of that?
Great question, Council President. And we will be presenting that information at the Finance and Administration Committee Meeting as part of our monthly financial reporting process.
Okay, great.
And that will give us the latest information.
Okay, carry on.
Okay. So some of the highlights for all of you. In it comes to public safety, it was the mayor's priority with fire dispatches to increase that staffing and funding level, and you can see the dollar impact there. And if you turn to page three and four of your workbook of the preliminary budget, you'll see a little more in-depth conversation or discussion regarding each of these items. So I'm just going to go through them fairly quickly. But fire dispatch was a top priority. And in fact, earlier, city council already approved three additional FTEs. So this was an early commencement in 2020 and will continue into 2021. The behavioral health units. We do have behavioral health units as part of the police department. They have been very successful. However, they are funded through True Blood, directly through Frontier, and do not necessarily run through our books. But those grant dollars to support those behavioral health units, those clinicians that are part of that, will end June 30th. At this point in time, there is no assurance that that grant funding will continue. So this is an insurance policy, so to speak, to make sure that we can continue the services that we already have in place through the remainder of the fiscal year of 2021. So this is about an estimated six-month cost for those clinicians to continue. Now, in the event that we are successful with grants, then we will not need to use this $350,000, which is proposed to be funded from the general fund reserves. And overtime study. There has been a lot of concern, and we continue to update and provide a monthly report on public safety overtime. This is not only costly, but it also plays a morale issue with our law enforcement and our firefighters. So what is suggested and proposed is that up to $150,000 for an independent study regarding our overtime. And this is, we did provide a special report on our overtime to you. It is part of your special report packet. But the study that we're suggesting is one that really takes a look at our practices, how we manage overtime, the impact on our employees that are working overtime, and really help put forward some suggestions of what we can do and the steps that we would need to do in order to implement real change that is impactful to our employees as well as to our pocketbook. Emergency management. Some of you are aware that we have hired a director, Sarah, and she's done a fabulous job in terms of overseeing the city's emergency management. But the county, we still have a collaborative opportunity to work with the county on regional emergency management. So the prior agreement was $225,000 that the city was paying before we had an emergency management director in place. What is proposed in the budget is $125,000 to continue to work with the county on developing a real collaborative model for regional emergency response. Council President, did you?
Yep. I just wanted to, so I wanted to understand. So originally, to be part of the collaborative, regional collaborative, it's $225,000. We funded a new position, and I'm unclear on the total amount of that position. But do we have the agreement that reduces our commitment to the county? Or are we just still negotiating that?
We are still negotiating that, Council President.
Okay. And so if we add the $225,000 to the current position, what's the total cost if they don't agree to go lower?
Sarah's, the director position cost is about $145,000, so about $355,000.
Okay, great. And, okay, and so you're thinking that might go down $100,000 if you, is that?
That, Council President, is what we would try to negotiate to. There are many opportunities there, and we're continuing to have those conversations. But ultimately, the goal is to achieve the best model for the city and the region.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Continuing on with mental health crisis stabilization facility, this was a big win that has just recently occurred, and the city has committed to $1.1 million. We expect those costs to be incurred in 2021, so that is why they are part of this proposed budget. The other $300,000 is to support operating costs, the city's share of operating costs, assuming that the facility is open as planned by midsummer of 2021. And those costs would come from the criminal justice fund, not the general fund, just to be clear on that. Public safety equipment, we've had a lot of discussion over the summer regarding public safety equipment. What is proposed at this time is to at least increase the annual 5.8 contribution by the inflationary cost based on the National Construction Cost Index at the time that we worked on the proposed budget. That amounts to $26,000. It's a small amount, but the intent is to at least keep up with inflation. And a dedicated project management. So this is an increase in staff and funding. We've projected the cost about $110,000. And what this is, is a dedicated project manager to help facilitate not only the technology projects that are part of public safety and criminal justice, but to also help keep the reform efforts moving forward. Any more questions on public safety before I move into Health and Human Services?
Tanya?
Yes.
I guess my question is with regard to the overtime study. I mean, $150,000 is quite a bit, and I'm wondering, what do we really think we're going to get from, get back from that study? What was, so I guess my question is kind of what's the rationale behind putting $150,000 into a study that I kind of feel like we already know what we're going to, what we're going to clear back versus only putting $26,000 more dollars into public safety equipment, which is facing a bit of a crisis right now?
And you are spot on, Council Member Cathcart. The $150,000 was a high estimate, but what we would hope to get is an independent, objective view, and that includes looking at the contracts. That includes somebody going in independently and looking at how we're managing, how we're staffing, how we're scheduling, to look a lot of that, and then just coming forward with some recommendations that we can decide on or not decide on. But an independent, objective study also pulls out and has, they have no skin in the game. They're not there to negotiate on the union side. There are no political or management hangups, if you will. It can be completely independent. And we think that that is good not only for management, but also for the city council, as well as the employees, that all have vested interest in any change that would happen or be proposed regarding overtime. Does that answer your question? And this is an up to amount. I truly suspect that the cost could be much less depending on the scoping and possibly even doing an RFP process.
No, that all sounds good. I just, you know, when we are in need of equipment, new equipment and upgrades, it just seems like 26 is just not, not that much to add to that budget. So that's my, my primary concern at this point in time. And then I'll just, since I'm on right now, to say, just a question to put out there. I don't know that you know the answer to this, Tanya, but in terms of bridging, which you're going to reference next, I wonder, are we going to get some specific program outlays and specific definitions of what that is before we vote to commit additional dollars to it?
Very quickly, the answer, Council Member Cathcart, is yes. And in the interest of time, I'm going to move very quickly through this. So Health and Human Services, the bridge housing program, yes, there was already $480,000 in the 221 budget. We did increase that to 20, by $20,000 to fulfill the city's $500,000 commitment. And then Human Services will be receiving additional grant funding, the $15 million. So we do expect to see some enhancements into many of our programs there. Initiatives and strategies, public safety, criminal and justice reform. At this time, what we've committed to is to financial analysis as these reform measures roll out. Is it a bit of a challenge to identify the financial impacts of these until we get a little further into that process? Police forfeiture funds, this was a great presentation today. What we were suggesting is that we do an audit of those funds just to see if we really need to segregate on the accounting side of it so that it is really clear of the different kinds of forfeitures, the different kinds of purposes and use, as well as not commingled contributions in with the forfeiture funds. And that would just be an internal audit that we would perform. A civil rights office. As of right now, what is suggested is to ensure that the human, I just lost the, the Human Rights Commission, to maybe reengage and look at the Human Rights Commission to see if they're fulfilling all the needs that the city has, but also to make sure that we have that, all of those appointments made. This may or may not completely hit the mark of what everybody's envisioning for civil rights. It was just a starting point. Alternative fire mitigation, this is the use of livestock to help mitigate fires. And we do believe that there could be some grant opportunities out there to help support this. And then neighborhood policing pilot. As part of post-reform, we think this is a viable thing to begin looking at and also put some cost estimate to that and cost impact and see how we can go from there. But at this time, nothing formally proposed in the budget, but it doesn't mean that we don't keep working towards that measure. Public Human Services, we do have the regional homelessness system, and that really requires a lot of cooperation and coordination with our regional partners on that. And then, of course, Human Services. There's been a lot of suggestion to really increase some of those contracts for the human services vendors that we have out there. With the increase in grant funding, there is high likelihood that that is probable, but there is a city process for that. Next step, and then I'm going to wrap up really quickly. October 15th, Urban Experience Review. That's going to largely focus on parks and recreation and library. October 22nd, we will look on some finance administration services, but we will also dedicate a majority of that to property taxes and what the impact is to our citizens. October 29th will be infrastructure, so we'll look at utility services and rates. I know that you've heard many, you've had presentations on rates, but it is worth repeating. And Development Services, economic development and housing initiatives. And development services, economic development and housing initiatives are top priorities, so you're going to hear just a little bit about the budgetary additions to help support those efforts. November, some of the dates are still to be determined, but that is the hearing process. So you'll have a property tax levy hearing, and presumably, we will start the 2021 budget hearing process. And it is...
All right. And you did a fabulous job of getting us off by 12:30. I think both of us are due at another meeting right now, so at least we were both...
Yes, we are.
Yes, Council Member Stratton, yes.
I just want to say, 10 seconds. Tanya, when discussions start on neighborhood planning or neighborhood policing pilot, please remember to include the community-oriented policing folks in the history of this, and they would be great inputs and great contributors on that.
Yep. And again, everyone, we're going to have a lot of these sessions, and if there's a question or a concern for this area, please bring it forward to another session. We've got plenty of time to go through this. Thanks, everyone. We're going to be in adjournment for today. We'll see everyone next Monday for Urban Experience at 1:15. We're adjourned. Thanks. Have a good weekend.